I don't know how I would react.
Good. Okay, we're going to reconvene at eleven oh seven, six point seven item, eleven AM, setting jointly as the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District and the Board of Supervisors. Consideration of presentation from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to discuss Clear Lake Hitch, state activities over the last year, including an update from the United States Geological Survey to discuss latest in-lake monitoring results, and a presentation from the Watershed Protection District staff to discuss accomplishments and programs established as a result of the hitch emergency declaration and the hitch-focused position allocations in water resources. And we're ready to start the item. Who's going to take the lead? Angela?
Yeah, good morning. Thank you. Thank you, Board, for having us here. My name is Angela De Palma Dow. I am Program Coordinator in Department of Water Resources, and I'm just going to introduce the item today. And so you are going to be hearing a presentation from Felipe Laluz from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Fred Freira from USGS, and then Chris Childers will be doing a presentation on the county efforts for Clear Lake Hitch. And I just want to start off and give a big thank you for supporting. There's been two positions allocated for Clear Lake Hitch programs in water resources, and one is held by Chris as the Program Coordinator, and the other one is held by Taylor Woodruff. And they are just amazing employees. They really help out with the department on all hitch-related, lake-related, stream-related, anything that's habitat where the hitch are, they are there and they're very helpful. And so we really appreciate the Board for allocating those positions. And we're really excited to present to you today on the results and the outcomes and future plans that those allocations have brought to the department and to the greater Lake County environment, particularly around Clear Lake. So I wanted to...Felipe will start, and so I just want to make sure that your slides, your mic works and your slides are responsive. There we go. Good. Okay. And I will say there's some materials that we've provided to both the Board and the public that are available here in the chamber. And there's also materials that are on our website. So if you go to County of Lake Water Resources Department, there's a tab on the left in the blue list that says Clear Lake Hitch on it, click on it, and all of the resources this presentation are already posted on that website are there if anybody needs any information about the hitch. So are you ready, Felipe?
Yes.
Okay, take it away. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angela. And I want to just express my gratitude to the Board of Supervisors and all the great staff at Watershed Protection District. We know that Clear Lake Hitch has been a big effort, Clear Lake Hitch Conservation, and appreciate the time and resources that you all have dedicated to this. So as Angela said, my name is Felipe Laluz. I'm a Senior Environmental Scientist with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and I'm going to update you on three kind of large components of our hitch conservation efforts. First, I'm going to give an overview of our department monitoring results. Later Fred will present the USGS data. I'm going to talk about some of the outcomes of the Clear Lake Hitch Summit that we hosted in 2024 and provide some background information, and I'm going to provide an update on the conservation strategy. And I'm not sure if you all would prefer to kind of, you know, the kind of big chunks I've put transition slides in, and if you prefer to ask questions at each section, that's fine with me, or if you prefer to save them towards the end, I'm flexible. Diving into the CDFW surveys, so we use two surveys, well, three, only two are being presented here, and I'll talk about the third one in just a second. We use a visual survey to monitor adults moving into tributaries. This is only conducted in tributaries in the Big Valley during the spring. This survey started in 2014, and it's a visual count at twenty-one fixed locations in tributaries. So this is not a fish-in-hand kind of survey. We just go and count and identify them. We also used an electrofishing survey, so we take a boat out within the lake, run an electrical current through the water, and net the fish that we collect. Those fish are all measured and identified. This samples shallow water within the lake, so close to shore, typically less than nine or ten feet. You know, that's the effective distance. And I just want folks to know the caveats, you know, what sort of limitations we have with these surveys. Again, this survey is conducted in spring. It started in 2019, and it's at four fixed transects, so four kind of rows that we sample throughout the upper arm of Clear Lake. These are not absolute population counts. Fish populations are notoriously difficult to measure, you know, because they swim away, they die. So these are more applicable as indices of, that we could use over long-term trends, to observe long-term trends. They count juveniles and adults hatched in previous years. We currently do not have a method to, well, we don't have a study to observe larval fish that are hatched in that year. So the data that you're seeing, you know, we have to take that into account that these fish were hatched in previous years. So for example, fish that we detected 2023 are at least one-year-old. That's one of the limitations of our surveys. And all these surveys started after the species was threatened, so after a pronounced decline was noticed and after the Fish and Game Commission determined that these, the species, the subspecies, is likely to become at risk of becoming extinct in the foreseeable future. So jumping into the visual surveys, again, this graph on the right just kind of shows the raw count. We do note that in 2023, we did see a record number of fish observed during this survey. The highest number was two thousand five hundred and forty-eight. Something interesting that popped out, and this is summarized in the table below, with the number of tributaries in which fish were observed and the number of actual fish counted, is that the number of tributaries occupied by fish varies with hydrology. And this makes sense. In many cases, some of these tributaries were dry as early as March, so of course, fish cannot occupy them. But there is kind of a, you know, more to the story than more water means more fish. As we could see in some years, you know, 2014, for example, they occupied two tributaries that were over a thousand fish counted. In 2017, a very wet year, they occupied five tributaries, but less than half than in 2014 were observed. So the, there is some nuance to this data that we still need to sort out, but basically, if we can keep water in these tributaries, the fish are able to move within them and occupy them, spawn and hatch. That's kind of my take-home point for the visual survey. The relative population estimate, so this is a more complex index, whereas the visual survey is just a raw count. We use a mark recapture method. So this is using the electrofishing data. We collect fish, our district biologist collects fish, marks them usually with a hole punch in the tail, so a physical mark. They are then released back into the population, and then we do a second sampling two weeks later. And this happens, I believe, ten times throughout the season, depending on conditions and resources. So based on the number of recaptures, we could use these two mathematical methods, the Schnabel method and the Schumacher-Eshmeyer method, to calculate an estimate of abundance, again, not an absolute count of fish, but an estimate. And we also calculate confidence intervals. And I know all the statisticians will cringe when I say this, but it's a rough estimate just to show that, you know, we're confident that our estimate falls within these bounds. In 2023, a lot of folks latched on to the one-point-three-million number, so that used the Schumacher-Eshmeyer method, and we see here in 2023 under SEM, you know, one million two hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-one. But just keep in mind that this was, has some pretty wide error bars, so raised up to seven-point-seven million, as far down as seventy thousand. So some pretty wide error bars on that because we only had a single recapture. So the, our confidence in the estimate is affected by how many fish we recapture. So that just kind of helps determine the range of values that the population might, that we're confident the population is. In 2024, so 2023, we captured nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine fish with one recapture. 2024, we captured nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine fish with zero recapture, so we were unable to calculate a population estimate. Still had good catch. There's other ways to assess this data. We haven't, we don't typically present it in catch-per-unit effort, but that is another method that we are going to look into, just as another way to look at the data. And finally, we have our draft population target. This is described in the draft conservation strategy. This was developed by our district biologists. We have received some feedback in it, which is why we're calling it a draft population target, because it does, you know, science is a conversation, things need to be revised. But just to point out, it's based on three criteria: a visual survey count greater than eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty, a relative population estimate greater than seventy-five-thousand, and it being the fifth most abundant fish in the general fish survey. So in 2023, we did meet the population estimate criteria, but we did not meet the visual survey criteria. 2024, we did not meet any of the criteria. So I know there's been a lot of talk of 2023 being a rebound year. It still did not count towards our population target. For us to reach this population target, all three of these criteria are to be met for six consecutive years, which is the kind of upper end of the lifespan of a hitch. So if we get, you know, good numbers in all three of these criteria for six consecutive years, we're confident that the population is doing much better than we've observed in recent history. That is all I'm going to say about our data. Would you like to pause here for questions, or should I just keep going?
Looks like Supervisor has a question.
So you mentioned the word target population. Last time we spoke, you guys were still working on what that target is. Do you have a specific number at this moment in time, or you're still working to formulate what the target population is?
So this is what we're working on with the criteria that I just presented. The feedback we received is there's concern that it doesn't account for traditional harvest, and that is one of the criteria that we want to incorporate. That's going to take some work because we don't know how many fish are needed for cultural and traditional practices. Ultimately, we want to get the fish delisted so that folks can take them as needed in a responsible manner. But we don't have, it has not been revised since the last time.
Okay. I'm thinking, but yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I understand it, and I'm happy to come back and, you know, give frequent updates as, you know, more questions come up. Okay, I could move on to the task force and sub it now? Oh, yes.
Sorry. You know, I had went to the thing at the...
Summit.
The summit, okay. And then the meeting, the symposium, that was the word I was looking for, and then the movie. One of the things that I found interesting was they went to the same spot the same day of the year, like March first, and then again, was it May? Sometime in May, May first or whatever. And they had admitted or stated that the fish may have already went through, like the week before, and they didn't, weren't able to count as many because they didn't know to meet at that spot on May first. So these numbers, they are flexible, correct?
Yes, and with any data collection, there is variability. So with the visual survey, our district biologist repeats, it's repeated visits. So we go back and visit the same spot in a standardized method. Fred uses a slightly different methodology. Both are good science, but we want it to be standardized, and that's the important thing. So there's a concept called observation bias, and so if we say like, oh, well, there's a bunch of hitch in this stream, but if we only observe them when there's lots there, then we're not getting the full picture.
I see. Is there a way to tag any of them like we do?
Yes, so we do, we do use mark recapture for our population estimate. There are studies going on in the watershed that are using passive integrated transponders or pit tags, the same sort of technology that you tag your dog with, so we can, if it runs away, the vet can scan it. And that sort of technology is being used to examine how the hitch are moving into watersheds, so the timing and duration and how far up they go.
Perfect.
But again, it's, it's labor-intensive, it's resource-intensive, so we need to set up these big antennas. As we all know, Clear Lake is a very flashy system, so once these big rains come, we need to pull the antennas out so we don't wash thousands of dollars of equipment down the stream. But we are, do have a pilot study in collaboration with Haba Matel Pomo of Upper Lake to look, to use, examine fish movements using pit tags.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? I know it's a lot. So moving on to the task force and summit, so my primary role is the facilitator of the task force. It originated in a government-to-government consultation in August of 2022, and we convened our first meeting in September of 2022. It was really brought about by the tribes. They came to the Fish and Game Commission and said, you know, hitch are still in dire straits. What are we doing to, to, what actions are we taking? So six of the seven sovereign nations in the region have participated, some of them in more of leadership roles, some of them simply in observation roles, but all seven of the sovereign nations are welcome in the task force. We currently have about fifteen local, state, and federal agencies, each of which has been invited by the tribes, just in a collaborative effort. And I've bolded sovereign nations here just to reiterate that from the state, we view the tribes as co-sovereigns. They are at the same level of a state. They, we consider them another government and treat them with the sort of respect as if we were interacting with the state of Nevada or Idaho. And that has been a topic that's been discussed in the summit. And the main force, the main purpose of the task force is to coordinate projects, share data, and improve communication. The main request is for us to get out of our silos and work together and provide information to all of the county, and I think we're doing, doing well on that. So the task force is more the technical-level staff. We've had three leadership summits hosted by Big Valley, Band of Pomo Indians, Robinson Rancheria, and Haba Matel Pomo of Upper Lake in three subsequent years. And these are really high-level discussions for our bosses, you know, to come and get together, identify what resources we have, how we can bolster each other's efforts, and really close the gaps between us. There was a lot discussed, and I tried to summarize two days of that summit in a slide. There's a lot that's not on here, but these are some of the big-picture items that came out. We talked a lot about governance, on how we interact with each other, with agencies and with tribes, with tribal governments. One of those is co-management. We are working on hosting a co-management workshop later this year where we can identify tools in which we can more efficiently work together. You know, there is a lot of, you know, we all know there's a lot of bureaucracy in government, and so we're trying to find ways to kind of slim that down and work more efficiently. Two of those tools are Assembly Bill 1284, which encourages agencies to enter into co-management agreements, and then State Bill, or sorry, Senate Bill 310, which provides a more direct pathway to allow for cultural burns. So there's a lot of good fire used in Lake County. It's, it's a, you know, California tends to have fire-adapted landscapes, and we want to bring that back in a controlled manner, not only to improve habitat, but also to reduce fuel loads and reduce fire risk for the county. Another big item on my plate this year is to memorialize the task force. So it was formed as an ad hoc committee. We want to formalize it, provide structure and a charter that folks can look at and go like, okay, well, these are what these guys are up to, you know, just to include, sorry, improve transparency and provide some more structure to the conversation. And that includes synchronizing our calendar to natural rhythms and other rhythms. Haba Matel Pomo of Upper Lake hosted a great workshop last week because it's, we're at the time where we're expecting the hitch to come, and this is just a great example of something that we can have on the task force calendar of like, we know when the wet season's supposed to start, what do we need to do, we know when fire season's supposed to start, but also other cycles such as funding cycles. A lot of these programs are grant-funded, so we want our calendar to line up with fiscal cycles as well. We're also going to develop a list of priority projects for 2027 so that when, you know, hopefully the state budget loosens up, we'll have projects ready to go ahead and jump on grants as they become available. Within the department, we've heard a lot about streamlining our funding and permitting processes. There are some tools available, such as our cutting-the-green-tape effort, but we're looking on how to adapt those processes and expand them just to make the process so that we're not the barrier. You know, we don't want projects to stall or die because of a permitting or funding issue, so we are looking at ways to not only educate more people about the tools that we have, but ways to further refine those tools and make the process easier on Angela. And a big part is education. So science is fundamentally education, educating each other, and in just, in addition to the science education, we've heard requests to educate staff, including myself, on tribal sovereignty, on what it means to work with a sovereign government, as well as what jurisdictions and responsibilities each agency has, so that when the state water boards comes out or when CDFW comes out, we can clearly say like, well, this is where our jurisdiction ends, this is where our responsibility ends, and to work and clarify all of our roles because, you know, staff turns over. We work in a very complex system, and we want to create a document and library where everybody can go and find out like, well, okay, this is their responsibility, this is the law that's based off of, and just clarify those roles. And finally, the conservation strategy, which is my final big chunk, and I'll get into that in the next group of slides, but I want to pause if there are questions about the summit or task force. Okay.
I just, sorry, I just want to, the next section of your slide about the conservation strategy, this is actually one of the bullet points that was highlighted in the Clear Lake Hitch Emergency Proclamation that your board passed in February 2023.
If I may interject, I appreciated seeing you at the Middle Creek Restoration Committee meeting. Can't help but think about that project with everything that we're talking about here. Probably one of the most important projects to deal with so many reasons why that project needs to happen, whether it's better water quality, flood control, water storage, but the hitch spawning area is massive. That's about sixteen-hundred acres. I don't need an answer now, but I appreciated seeing you there, and I'd love to better understand how fish and wildlife can help us move that forward. We're dealing with, like you said, a very complex system in order to get that project accomplished, and it just feels like we are chugging through like molasses rather than really streamlining and moving forward where there's such a need for this. So just looking forward to further conversations, but I can't help but think about that project as we discuss this.
Yeah, thank you for that, and it just brings the point that these sort of meetings are, why these sort of meetings are important, there's so much going on. You know, I appreciate that, the comment of we are, you know, slogging through molasses and just keeping in mind that this is a marathon. And so figuring out more efficiencies and how we can better work together is really my primary goal here. Okay, moving on to the conservation strategy. Unfortunately, I know folks are eager to sign this, but the department was not willing to sign it as it is currently written, and I just want to say that first and foremost. The May 2024 draft that is currently on the website still has a lot of work that needs to be done. I'm going to step through that, but first I want to provide some background on the conservation strategy to just kind of illustrate why, well, I'll get to it. So it started in 2017 as a community document. There has been some turnover, both in staff and authors, and the benefit of having a community document is that it allows for flexibility, but in that flexibility, the responsibility hasn't really been clarified and crystallized. So there's no set author's list, it's been kind of in flux, and there's no established process, there's no instruction manual for writing this sort of document. To add to our complication, there are two processes that we need to consider. First, there's a state recovery plan that CDFW is developing. We are developing our guidance document currently with plans for in April, providing for public comment, and this is a guidance document for the state to develop recovery plans. There's also the federal recovery plan, which would be required if they are listed federally. And we want the conservation strategy to be able to check both those boxes so that when the state recovery plan guidance goes into effect, and if the feds list them, that this recovery conservation strategy can fill those, so we don't have to start again. So it's a big lift. The May 2024 draft, as I said, we recommended major revisions from CDFW, and I'm going to step into that next. Basically, this, this, you know, kind of Venn diagram on the side is just kind of what I thought of when I think of hitch. It's this giant mess of overlapping, complex, and nuanced factors that are affecting the population, everything from harmful algal blooms to water quality and water use to habitat connectivity and invasive species. And so we want to sort this out. The document as it's written had some pretty substantial organizational issues, and we want to make, ideally make this a document so that when somebody, a new supervisor, a new county supervisor, for example, comes in, they can pick up this document and know what we're thinking. It is not in that state, and in fact, it was kind of frustrating to read. It lacked a logical reading order, there were fragmented concepts, there were recommendations throughout the document, there's information on different life stages throughout the document, and we want to reorganize it so that we can go, okay, this is what's affecting eggs, this is what's affecting larvae, and just take all the pieces and rebuild it in a more organized and approachable manner. It's like building a house. We need a good blueprint to build a good foundation on. We also want to clearly demonstrate linkages between each threat and goals, objectives, criteria, and actions, and I'll define those terms. And then we also want it presented in clear and concise language. You know, when we write these documents, we're scientists, we use a lot of jargon. We want it to be presented in a way that, you know, somebody who hasn't been working on hitch for five years can understand. There are also submissions, missing sections. One of the bigger ones was continued collaboration. There was a single goal that said we will continue to collaborate. What does that look like? That is one of the big sections that we're sorting out. And we also want to develop criteria or performance measures. So when we say restore wetlands, we want to have a target, like the population target. We want to have a goal to work towards so that as we check in regularly, we can say, how close are we to this goal? Is this goal adequate? That's the scientific method, and that's how we are approaching this. It also lacked a timeline for update, review, and reporting out. We had sort of a verbal agreement that we would do annual reports in a five-year review that wasn't clarified in the document, and so, again, we want all these specifics captured and in a document, so, you know, it's not like, oh, I thought we said five years. We want that clearly stated explicitly. And then we need a transparent and structured process to complete and update it. We had submitted some comments that were not addressed, and so the process going forward, and by we, I mean CDFW, the process going forward, we want it to be as transparent as possible. So this is the process on how we will continue. I've taken the lead on it. So we've restarted monthly meetings. We're meeting the last Friday of the month, starting with a clearly structured outline. So I took the first crack at developing this outline, kind of organizing everything what I thought logically. It's being reviewed by some of our collaborators, but I am looking for more input on it. I didn't bring it here today because, just to respect everybody's time, but we do need stakeholder input. So I am working with the Farm Bureau, I plan on presenting to the Ag Committee and the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, working with Land Trust and others to make sure that the entire community has the opportunity to provide feedback. And I just want to stop and say that I'm very impressed with how engaged the Clear Lake, the Lake County community is. This is kind of a big learning experience for the department for such an engaged community to get so much input. As we step through the outline in different sections, we're populating it with information from the current draft. Ton of work went into that draft, there's a lot of great information, we just want to reorganize it in a more approachable manner. We've already started populating the outline. And then as the outline sections of the outline are completed, we're going to have a single author write it, so it's all in the same style and language. I know if you read through it now, you could see there are sections that are, you know, people have different writing styles, and it can be kind of jarring to switch from a section that was, you know, copied from a technical report to a section that's more of a story style. So we want a single writer to rewrite it, and we're working with the Water Resources Control Board on a ghostwriter, just to make sure it's all in the same, same voice. We'll then resolve prior comments, and we'll do a final review and editing, make sure all the citations are correct, and sign and implement. The way this process is playing out is we're having, you know, again, I said the outline The way this process is playing out is we're having, you know, again, I said the outline is out for review. We're doing a red flag review. So, glaring, you know, this is missing or this is inaccurate. We're not going to bother with like, "I don't like the way this is worded," because we're going to have an author rewrite it at the end of the process. And then there'll be another opportunity for red flag review as each section comes out. So, we can review a section, and the reason I'm structuring it like this is I don't want to give folks this massive document and say like, "Give me comments." I want it to be more direct and more thought out, a more intentional approach. To the right, this is kind of how the sections are broken up. So, up at the top, it's a little cut off here, but that's a threat. So, on the bigger, wider column, the threats would be described in the scientific assessment section. That also cover basic biology, the status of the population and other information, background information. The next section would be a recovery strategy, so that would be the goals and objectives. Goals are the overarching, you know, goal. You know, ameliorate threats associated with non-native species or water quality, for example. So, general goals that we're trying to get. We then drill down into more specific objectives, which are the conditions to meet that goal. So, there will be multiple objectives under a goal, and these need to be adaptable. So, you know, this is kind of the scientific process where we will go through each objective and learn from it. Then finally, an implementation strategy, so specific actions based on the objectives. You know, if the objective is, you know, for example, you know, the goal is to address non-native species, one of the objectives could be carp management or, you know, predation and competition. A specific action could be the carp management program that's currently underway. And then we need to develop criteria to identify like the biomass of carp that we would need to remove or some sort of goal. And then I put that arrow going back just to reminder that this will be an iterative process that as we learn more about this of even what's feasible, we'll go back and revisit our goals, objectives, and actions, and that, I believe, will be on a five-year time step. And that's all I have. I know that was a lot, and I'm happy to answer any other questions. I put my contact information up here, so members of the public can reach out directly to me if they have questions. But CDFW is a big department. There are other email addresses for specific questions. And if you don't know who to contact, reach out to me, and I'll put you in touch.
Any questions from the board right now before we move to the next section of this?
No.
No? Okay.
Thank you, Felipe. We're going to do a chair swap here. And next, we have Fred Fire from United States Geological Survey, USGS. And he's going to talk about the in-lake sampling from 2024. Everything look good, Fred? You ready?
Looks good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good morning, supervisors. Thank you for having me here. Pleasure to be here in front of you. So, my name is Fred Fire. I'm a research fish biologist with the US Geological Survey, the California Water Science Center. We're based out of Sacramento. And we got involved because the USGS is the science and research arm of the Department of Interior. And as you know, the US Fish and Wildlife Service is considering listing the Clear Lake Hitch as well. And so, they enlisted our help back in, starting in 2017 to generate information that could help contribute to the decisions that they need to make about listing the species and critical habitat designations and things like that. And it would more broadly help the entire community that needs to make these decisions. So, we have been monitoring the status of the population of Clear Lake Hitch within the lake since 2017. We've been actively doing it since about 2021, right around that timeframe. We started actively collaborating with the tribes around the lake. And so, the picture there you see on the right is us working together with the tribes with the survey. So, the last several years, we've been actively working with the tribes and others in the community to collect these data. So, we conduct our work a little bit differently than the way CDF and W does. And so, what we do is we do a survey entirely within the lake, and we do this for a couple of reasons. We do it during the summertime after the fish have completed their reproductive cycle. And so, all the fish have returned back to the lake. So, we have somewhat of a closed population, so we're confident that we're getting a representative sample of the entire population. We're not missing fish as if we were, for example, if we were conducting our survey while the fish were migrating upstream and spawning, we would be missing those individuals. And so, that's why we do it when we do it. And the way we do it is kind of old-fashioned. We set out nets, and we collect fish in the nets. We happen to use gill nets. That's the best way to actually capture these fish effectively. We do really short-duration sets so that we can be careful with the fish and release them alive. And the map there shows you all the sites that we have sampled with these nets within the lake since the start of the survey. And so, we've got a study design that if you guys have questions, I can talk a lot more about. But the way we approach the sampling is that this fish occupies the lake from bottom to surface, from shore to shore. They are literally everywhere within the lake. And so, we need to effectively sample that full range of the habitat in order to get a representative sample of the population so that we can then say something about the abundance of this fish from year to year. And these two plots I'm showing you here are the two key pieces of information that we generate from the data that we get from our surveys. The plot on the left is a time series of the abundance of the fish that we collect. And you can see on the x-axis there, we go from 2017 through 2024. We did not do any work in 2020 for a lot of the same reasons that nobody else did any work in 2020. And on the top panel are the adult fish, and on the bottom panel are the juvenile fish. One thing that is very similar to the CDF and W surveys that Felipe mentioned is that the juvenile fish that we sample are the fish that are actually vulnerable to our sampling gear. So, we don't collect the little tiny babies that have been born that year. We collect fish that, the smallest fish we catch are about one year of age. But they're not sexually mature and reproductive yet for the most part, and so that's why we call them juvenile, and we separate those out from the adults. And you can see there's some variability there where early in the years, or in the early years, catch rates are much higher for the most part than in the later years. And the data there, the mean CPUE, that's basically just a catch per unit effort. So, what we do is we, similarly, we do not estimate an actual population size. We're not doing a true census. We are taking samples of the population and getting an index of relative abundance from year to year. So, we can tell you how many more fish are in the lake one year versus another year, but we can't tell you an absolute number of how many fish there are in the lake. Getting that number is really difficult and would take just a tremendous amount of resources. And it's, so far, it's been infeasible to be able to do something like that. The more important plot's probably the one on the right because it's got a little bit more information in it. Because what that's showing you there is for the same years that are vertically oriented this time, the size distribution of fish in our samples. And so, I was telling you earlier, the smallest fish we catch is about a year of age. And so, that's on the millimeter scale, about 130-ish millimeters in length. And the fish grow to about, you know, 14, 16 inches in length. That's kind of the maximum size on the right there. And there's some key things that you should take away from this plot on the right here. And so, in the first year that we did our survey in 2017, what you can see is that there's a lot of individual juvenile fish in the population and relatively fewer adult fish in the population. It looks like there, I used to have some red lines on this plot. It looks like they didn't carry through. But just about 200 millimeters is where that juvenile and adult breakpoint is. So, if you can kind of like take the 200 mark and just like draw an imaginary line all the way up to the top, that's kind of the differentiation between the juveniles and the adults. Fast forward to 2018, you can see very few juveniles in the population. But that juvenile population from 2017 grew up and transitioned into those adults that you now see in 2018. You can see how that mode shifts over. Same thing for 2019. Very few juvenile fish. And those adult fish transitioned into another older year class, but you can see those numbers dropped way back down. And you can see that continues all the way into 2022. And 2022 is leading into 2023. That's when we came and spoke to you guys previously about these results that we saw transitioning from relatively good numbers to pretty low numbers into 2022. And that's when a lot of the alarm bells went off for everybody back in 2022. Because for some context on how bad 2022 was, in 2017, we caught as many as 72 individual fish in one of our net samples. In 2022, we caught a total of six fish in the entire survey. So, we went from, you can kind of eyeball it on the plot on the left, but we went from averaging about one and a half to two fish per net sample to one to two fish per 30 net samples in 2022. So, the numbers were really depressed, and that was, you know, causing a lot of alarms for a lot of folks. And that's one of the factors that contributed to the emergency listing that you guys did. And then comes 2023, and that year had us all scratching our heads. What in the heck happened here? And you saw from Felipe's presentation that the Department of Fish and Wildlife saw a similar uptick in individuals and their surveys in 2023. And the bottom line is, we don't know what happened in 2023 that resulted in all of these fish. We have some hypotheses and some ideas, but we're all collectively trying to figure out what exactly happened. One thing that I am perfectly confident in is our sampling abilities. And so, we have, we've done a lot of evaluations of our sampling methods, and we feel pretty confident in their ability to detect changes in the population from year to year. And CDF and W has done the same thing. And so, this was quite a surprise, and it's something we're still scratching our heads about and trying to figure out. But transition down to 2024, those numbers that we saw in 2023 did not result in really large numbers of fish in 2024. Like you see that transition from 2017 to 2018. We don't really see that in 23 to 24, which suggests a couple of things. Among others, that survival within the lake was probably pretty poor for both the juvenile and the adult fish that we saw in 2023. So, there's a lot of factors suggesting that perhaps the lake was inundated by some fish from outside of the lake in 2023, but we don't know that for sure. We're trying to figure that out to see if that's one of the possible explanations here. One other thing I wanted to mention to you all is that this year, as one of the studies that we're doing to try to help understand what led to this influx of fish in 2023, is we've done some surveys outside of the lake just to see what is happening on the landscape in terms of the fish and where are these fish distributed. And so, we started last October, and we did a survey of Lower Blue Lake, which I'm sure you all are very familiar with. And the punchline of the story is that we went up and we did the exact same methods that we do in Clear Lake, and we found quite a few Clear Lake Hitches within Blue Lake. And these are those numbers there. So, this is the plot that I showed you just a couple of slides ago that shows our catch rates of Clear Lake Hitch. Within Clear Lake, those are the black values there. And then I just added the values that we observed last year in 2024 from Lower Blue Lake. And what you can see is our catch rates, at least, the rates of the numbers of fish that we catch in our nets has been very similar to what we've seen in Clear Lake over the last couple of years and even higher than some of those lower years back in 2017 through 2022. So, that's a good sign that there are some fish out on the landscape that are potentially buffering the population within Clear Lake. We still don't know a lot about how those populations are connected and the movements between those two systems and throughout the watershed as a whole. And so, that's contributing to a lot of the studies that we're doing. Felipe mentioned the tagging of the fish and tracking their movements up in the watershed, and we're doing some similar things. Bullet point number two there is fortunately for us, these fish have little flight recorders in their heads called odalis, these little ear stones. And so, fortunately, these ear stones, what they do is they they record the chemical signature of the water that the fish are in. So, the extent to which the chemical signatures in these various habitats differ, we can use that to track the movements of the fish without actually having to put a tag on them. So, this is something that's used quite often in marine fisheries with salmon and things like that to find out. You can catch a salmon out in the ocean, and you can tell whether or not it was born in the Feather River or the Sacramento River, that kind of thing. So, we can do that exact same thing with Clear Lake Hitch. So, that's one of the studies we're doing moving forward. We're actively doing that right now. Circling back up to bullet number one there, it's kind of, the title of this slide is "Next Steps: Things We're Working On Right Now." You can see it on the other screen, but not on this screen here because the material here is covering it up. But we do have funding in place to do our survey in 2025, so we'll be doing that. Included with that survey, we're going to do our regular survey, but we want to invite people out on the boat with us to come and see what we're doing and how we do it, and have you participate. You could hold a Clear Lake Hitch if we're lucky enough to catch a fish that day. I extended invitation to the community and to the board last year. We had, nobody from the board happened to be able to make it that particular time. But just know that there's an open invitation for everybody to join. I mentioned bullet point two there. And then two other bullet points here just really quickly. We're collaborating actively with members of the community, CDF and W, the county, the tribes, and others on a variety of efforts here, working on data synthesis and summaries to try to really capture what we've been able to gather in terms of data and information on Clear Lake Hitch and put it all together and see what kind of story it's really telling us. And then we're also working on some proposals and some activities to try to generate even more information that's going to help us and the county and the resource agencies to make their decisions. So, my contact information is up there at the top. Matt Young, my colleague, unfortunately, he's been ill for a few days, so he was unable to make it. But you're welcome to reach out to either one of us if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at this point from board members before we go to the next section? Supervisor Sabatia?
Let's just go to the next section.
Okay.
Hold my question.
We have one more presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Chris Childers with the Lake County Watershed Protection District. Today, I'm here to give you all some updates about what we do with the hitch program and why my job is wonderful. So, first off, we're going to start off with a timeline, just so everybody is on the same page. So, in 2014, the Clear Lake Hitch was listed as threatened under the California Endangered Species Act. Then in 2021 through 2022, there was a local call for action in response to low spawner observation counts and also low in-lake counts. In 2023, the Board of Supervisors declared a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to drought, habitat loss, and potential extinction of the Clear Lake Hitch. Also, in 2024, the Board of Supervisors renewed this proclamation. In 2025, the US Fish and Wildlife Service proposed to list the hitch as threatened, subject to a 60-day comment period, which we are currently still in. The picture on your right there is Copsy Creek. So, this slide is very important. It takes an army to make this happen. It takes many partners working together to accomplish a common goal. With the support of tribal, local, state, and federal agencies, we're able to work towards this goal. So, with the multi-agency collaboration internally, we are part of the Clear Lake Hitch Task Force Meetings, which Felipe puts on. We're also involved with the Clear Lake Hitch Conservation Strategy Writers. So, Angela and myself are a part of that. And something new that has come up is the Clear Lake Hitch Data Synthesis Meetings, where we're compiling data from many different agencies and trying to get something out of that. We also are working on the Kelsey Creek Fish Passage Project, which is the Main Street Bridge in Kelseyville where the fish ladder is. And we have been part of a Coal Creek Advisory Collaborative. If you're not aware, Coal Creek floods yearly, and we have hitch stranded in ditches, hayfields. It's a big problem, and there's homeowners out there that have a lot of flooding as well. And we also attended the 2024 Clear Lake Hitch Summit. And we also attended the 2024 Clear Lake Hitch Summit. On those pictures, top right is the ladder, Kelsey Creek Fish Ladder at Main Street, and on the bottom right is sanding with Habemotol and Big Valley and Robinson. So part of the multi-agency collaboration here, adult and juvenile hitch rescues with the tribes. So we partner with the tribes to go out and rescue these fish when they're becoming stranded and desiccated. We also help with electrofishing surveys from CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, with Ben Ewing. And we also help with the USGS in-lake gillnet service or gillnet survey with Fred here. So yeah, I already mentioned, we partner with Habemotol for the hitch tagging study, and that is the pit tag, the passive integrated transponder tag. So we partner with them with pit tag array and tagging some of these fish. Pictures, bottom left is a juvenile Clear Lake hitch, bottom middle is e-fishing with CDFW, bottom right is sanding with Habemotol and Robinson, and then top right is backpack electrofishing right next to Habiton Park where those fish got stranded last year. So here are some of our accomplishments, not nearly all of them. I have a handout up here with more, and I gave all the supervisors a handout as well. But 2024, we successfully completed the first year of hitch spawner observations. So we do a spawner observation very similar to CDFW. We have 14 sites. I'll get into that in my next slides. Also, recently, we have developed a community science hitch spawner observation survey. So I presented on this last week, and our first training will be on February 27th. The second training will be on March 5th. But basically, the survey is to get the community involved in observations, and so they will have to take a training to make sure that they can identify Sacramento sucker versus a Clear Lake hitch versus, you know, other fish. We also have collaborated with CDFW and California Conservation Corps for debris and soft barrier removal in some of the creeks. We have implementation and training of RIPRAM. So basically, it's a Riparian Rapid Assessment Method. It's a standardized way to assess Riparian habitat in creeks. So anybody that's trained can go do the survey, and it's just a way of standardizing data collection. We created the hitch educational materials and stocked booths at outreach, at multiple outreach events. We also partnered and collaborated with regional tribes on carp management, tulip planting, and creek and shoreline restoration. Thanks to Angela, she planned and organized the Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium Event, which was a big success. That was before I came on with the county. Pictures, top right, we're doing RIPRAM. Bottom right is community outreach at Tulip Boat Festival hosted by Big Valley. And then on the bottom, there's a carp removal gillnet. So we have collected one year of data, and so this is the district's spawner surveys. So the map here shows our 14 sites. Upper Lake is covered by Habemotol and Robinson, and also, so Big Valley is also covered by CDFW and Big Valley. So we chose to pick sites that aren't covered by other agencies here. So this is the first year of data collected. It will be compared with future years of data, kind of like what Fred said, to determine the relative number of hitch migrating up the creek. So we need multiple years of data to compare these years to each other. Currently, we are finishing up the 2024 report, and it will be available on our website soon. There's GPS coordinates and all the sites that we do. There's the 14 sites there on the bottom right. So here are some of the results that we have here. So we observed 23 adult hitch, and the creeks were Copsy, Hendricks, and Forbes, I believe. And then also, we observed 2,000 juvenile hitch, and that was all in Burns Valley Creek. And if you look here on the graph, on the left side, we have on the x-axis fish species, y is the number of fish. So we have some native fish in there, some non-natives, Clear Lake hitch, Sacramento Blackfish, Sacramento sucker. The unknown there is larval stage fish that were not identified. So when they are at that larval stage, they are very difficult to identify, and to avoid mortality, they were just listed as unknown because it's a visual observation, right? We're not touching these fish. So our 2025 goals, we'd like to launch our Community Science Hitch Spawner Observation Survey, which that's going on right now, complete the second year of district spawner observations, continue building partnerships with tribes and agencies. The tribal partnerships are key here. Community outreach and event participation. We'd also like to make progress on the Kelsey Creek Fish Ladder Project. We also want to help manage and execute grants for habitat restoration projects, provide local support for hitch studies and fish rescues, make progress on the Coal Creek Restoration Planning Project, and also continue assisting agencies with research projects related to Clear Lake hitch. Picture on the top right here is a bunch of juvenile, looks like hitch and blackfish, and then on the bottom is underwater picture. So here is a slide with some of our hitch-related grants. So if you look at type there, we have in-lake water quality monitoring, we have creek restoration grants, we have lake restoration grants, restoration planning, and then, yeah, it looks like water quality monitoring. One of them is the Habemotol hitch tagging study. On the bottom four or five where it says 2025 to 28, those haven't been, the funding for those have not dropped yet, but they should drop sometime in 2025. And then we have over $5 million of grant money allocated towards hitch-related projects. Also, you can visit our website. This particular PowerPoint presentation is already posted on our website, so all you got to do is go to lakecounty.ca.gov/waterresources, and you can see this presentation along with CDFW's data, USGS data, and other data that has been collected. And here's how to contact us. My email's on there. Also, Taylor Woodruff, who is technician, her email's on there, and then you have a lot of resources email, which didn't come out right. Any questions, comments?
Thank you. I believe Supervisor Pisgus is first.
Well, Angela, thank you for bringing this update to us. A lot's happened in the last couple of years, and I remember in those conversations, the things that we asked for. We wanted to see more collaboration, we wanted to see enhanced communication, we wanted to see strong partnerships, we wanted to see action items, we wanted to see plans, we wanted to work on the hitch strategy, like all the things that we ask for our emotion now. So I just really want to thank all of you because it is a big ask, it is a heavy lift. But to see the coordination and collaboration with all of these partners doing it together, I'm just really excited. The investment that we made with the two positions in water resources has been key because on the county side, we never had that capacity to do the things on top of the regular works that you all have to do. So this is a big success for me, and I just can't tell you how happy I am to get this update and to see all this progress and the $5.3 million in grants. That's incredible. We knew we had to be able to share the data. That was one of the biggest issues. We had no data. We had lots of pockets of data in different areas with different partners, but to have that data synthesized so that we can actually go after the grant funding and look at all of the different factors, right? It's so many different things, and we've had huge success cleaning out the creeks and working on the diversions. So thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I'm really looking forward to taking a deeper dive with the Ag Advisory Committee and Fish and Wildlife because I think it's really important to get this out to the community. We have really engaged community members, and the project for the observations is an excellent way to get people involved. And I know, you know, there were some efforts in that in the past, but again, it's getting that uniform program, training, data collection, all of those are the pieces that are really needed to make sure that we can activate those community members that are out there. So thank you so much.
I appreciate all the information, and I'll just be honest, it leaves me with more questions than answers, and I'm sure it's the same for you guys as you're still trying to figure out where the blips are coming from, why things are disappearing as quickly as they are. And I appreciate that you say you've double-checked your way of surveying, but it's not working for the fish specific that we're talking about, or else it would make more sense as to what we're looking at. Something's happening that is impacting that survey that may work in other places or for other fish, but for some reason, it's eluding us. I have a bunch of questions. I'll try to limit it. My limited knowledge on fish, mostly certain fish, are we anticipating that a fish that is spawned in a specific creek typically will go back to that same creek for spawning? Is that similar to like salmon and things like that? Is that our expectation?
Fred, did you want to, he actually published a paper that kind of looked at that, the odolith research to kind of indicate where hitch, if they're in the lake, what tributary they came from, so he can talk about that, can't you? Yes.
The quick and easy answer is maybe. We don't know. There's a lot of fish that do do that. There's reason to believe that Clear Lake hitch probably will occupy and access whatever's available to them, given the environment that they've sort of evolved into. We will likely be able to answer some questions like that with the odolith work that Angela mentioned. One thing I am going to push back on you a little bit with regards to the sampling methods. So it's not so much that the sampling methods that we have aren't working for the hitch. The sampling methods we have are showing what the status of the population is. And so all those like really weird things that we're seeing with the population, those are causes for concern because that's not how you'd expect a normal population to function and to work. And so it's not so much a problem in the methods, it's that there's things that are disrupting the population dynamics of the fish that are causing these booms and busts that we don't have a collective understanding of yet.
Appreciate the pushback and the response on the whether or not they go back to their tributaries. There's been this conversation about Blue Lake, so I'm glad that you're out there doing some studies and finding things. I don't believe historically that the hitch have always been there. Is it new? Is it normal? Is it?
That's a question we'd all like the answer to.
Okay. Because I know that, again, going geological timescape, water used to flow towards Ukiah, that got stopped, now it goes the other direction, just kind of trying to understand where all of that fits. My next question is related to, I guess, more USGS specifics. I'm not hearing you guys talk about climate change in this conversation, and I think every species to a certain degree is impacted by climate change. How is that impacting your studies? And also, are we looking at, because our volcano is dormant, but it's also active. Like there's still vents, there are still bubbles coming out of the ground, there's gases. Are we looking at that and the potential impact? And if there's fluctuations of what's happening volcanically below the ground that might have impact on anything and everything that's related to the lake?
I can't speak to anything regarding the volcanism side of it. It's a fascinating thing that I'm super interested in as well. It's just, it's just a super interesting landscape that we have here. With respect to climate change, that could potentially impact the fish, not just Clear Lake hitch, but all the fish in the lake in a variety of ways, right? Like the extent to which species utilize the watershed for spawning and reproduction, you know, the extent to which climate change alters the timing and the magnitude of the flows and how that corresponds with temperature patterns, that could all play a part in this. And what we're hoping is that collectively, the information that we gather about what's going on in the watershed with the studies that CDFW is doing and the county is doing, that we can generate some baseline understanding of how that watershed is used, and then we can then layer on projections of climate, that we have a variety of climate projections for this area that we can then kind of make some projections and some estimates of what the likely impacts might be to the species. Similar things with the lake as well. As you guys know, the lake's very sensitive to weather and climate, and so there's a lot of potential things that could happen there. We're kind of in our infancy in really having the amount of knowledge and science available to make those projections.
And I appreciate that, and I just know that our lake is super sensitive for how shallow it is. Just there's so many factors that in our conversation with NASA, maybe I was using hyperbole, but I said this is like ground zero for climate change. We're the canary in the coal mine. Whatever's going to happen, we're going to see it first because our water gets impacted so quickly. And my last question is for Mr. Childers. Almost said it wrong. That was interesting to me that when you found 2,000 in Burns Valley Creek, does that mean you didn't find any in the other creeks? Because you had 14 sites.
You're talking about the juvenile fish? So yeah, the 2,000 juvenile fish, those were actually, yeah, those were with 2,000 Sacramento Blackfish in Burns Valley Creek, so they were together.
But that wasn't a complete survey of all the creeks, and you only found that in Burns Valley Creek?
Correct. The juvenile fish were only found in Burns Valley Creek.
So I'm hearing you're working on Coal Creek, you're working, and I'm wondering, are we maybe focused, not on the wrong thing, but is there any focus in the South Shore area on where maybe they're already focused on due to whatever changes that have led them to be more into those creeks? Not that they've never been there historically, but I'm hearing about cleaning up Kelsey Creek, Coal Creek, Adobe Creek. I have yet to hear any projects regarding Burns Valley Creek. Is that in the future, if that's where the numbers are currently based on at least one survey, that doesn't mean that's going to be the same for the next survey, are we missing something that we're not doing?
So we do our visual spawner surveys down there. I do know that Ben Ewing with CDFW just did a fish passage project on Schindler Creek, which was right under the bridge there, so to make passage easier. I will take note on that, and I think it is wise to do restoration down there. I know there's a couple of fish ladders there, or, you know, that they can move, and I don't know if either one of you all has any other information. Okay, Felipe?
Also, we prioritize some of the restoration projects and streams based on how many fish rescues are needed, and there's currently not a need for fish rescues in Burns Valley. It's all the waters in the creek, whereas Coal Creek, there is no creek bed, so all the water goes out of the creek until all the fish get stuck outside of the creek and require a lot of resources, basically save them and get them back in the lake or the creek. So that's why that's a priority, and that's why the focus at least now is on that project. And then because there is so much localized flooding and water quality impacts, it's like a multi-benefit project, which means it's more competitive for grants, and we can get more oomph for the amount of funds for that project. So that's just why that one is prioritized. But we have other projects that do address passages and issues within the creeks.
And just to clarify, I'm not asking to move projects. I was just curious, I had not heard of anything down there, so not trying to reprioritize. I think we, everything needs to be looked at.
Yeah, and that's sort of the big challenge with the conservation strategy is everything is high priority, and there's only so many of us. So these two positions that the county has provided are very useful, and we're leveraging them as much as we can. And I just want to, you know, it's tempting that when we see one big number, that we latch onto it, you know? Same thing happens when we release a population estimate, you know, we see like a big number. But we have to look at it at a whole picture, you know, look at the bigger picture and look at more data over time. So with the additional coverage that the county's providing with the spawner surveys and the citizen science effort, we're going to get a better understanding of trends throughout the entire watershed, which will help us inform, you know, our management efforts, where we're directing our resources. So, you know, when we see a big number, pause and take a breath and think about it in a broader context. and, and think about it in a broader context.
Supervisor, oh, did you still have it?
I'm not gonna.
Okay. I'll just comment quickly. Supervisor Paeska summed up, you know, what I would've said very well, better than I could've. So I just wanted to say good job. I appreciate the collaboration with all the agencies, working together with the tribes and, and all of the communication. And I look forward to seeing continued progress. I, I will take you up on an offer to go out and I would like to get out there and see what's going on. So with that, unless there's any other supervisor comments, I'll go ahead and open it up to the, go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much for, um, having the presentation today. And then, this is the very beginning, so we have to, we're at the very bottom of the hill. We have a big hill. And the support for the positions in our department and all the effort everybody's done is just the start. So we have to keep going. We have to be held accountable for everything that we wanna keep doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Do we have first in the room, any, anyone that wishes to comment? If so, go ahead and come up, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to comment.
Hi, I am Taylor Woodhoff. I work with Chris Shielders, um, the hitch technician. I just wanted to chime in real quick about the Burns Valley site. So, a lot of the sites that we monitor are a little bit further up in the watershed. And juvenile hitch tend to school with juvenile blackfish a lot closer to the lake and the openings of the, the mouths of the tributaries. And that spot specifically is along Lake Shore Boulevard over there. So it's really close to the lake, if that, um, adds a little bit of information to that site specifically. Which is why we only saw the school of juveniles there and not higher up on the other sites. But I just wanted to chime in real quick, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Nils Casper and I live in Kelceville. First of all, thank you for taking up this issue and really talking about the Clear Lake Hitch and all the effects, um, that we have seen over the past years. Where I live in Kelceville, uh, we live right off of Clark Drive, where Kelsey, I mean, uh, Coal Creek historically, um, was routed. And then it was rerouted by the Army Corps of Engineers half a century ago. And unfortunately, we have seen very little or no maintenance at all in the engineer channel. And as a result of that, we have months-long flooding every year. Our fields are like completely underwater for five to six months out of the year. And also, we see a lot of Clear Lake Hitch there. They, they come over the banks of Coal Creek, they get stranded. We've had, um, Big Valley Rancharia out doing rescues. Uh, there's really thousands of fish that just die mid-June as soon as all the water evaporates. And it just repeats year after year, um, until we fix this issue. We have had the chance to sit in with, um, CDFW, um, US Fish and Wildlife Service as well, the tribes, uh, the county water resources. And, yeah, there's a lot of grants available. And, uh, it really requires the county to keep at it and tap into that. You know, it's a lot of money and a lot of well-paying jobs that we can really fund with this. Yeah, and so, um, I really urge, um, the Board of Supervisors and the Watershed Protection District to keep at it and, um, come up with that conservation plan. I believe if we want to make the life better for the Clear Lake Hitch, uh, we really need to solve that flow issue in Coal Creek. Yeah, I think it's a, it's as much about saving the species as it is also to improve the lives of the people that live there. We've had Clark Drive, for example, completely on lockdown last week as a direct result of Coal Creek just going over the levee and completely flooding the road. Yeah, so keep at it and I hope we can really solve this issue. Thank you.
And thank you, Nils, for, um, documenting everything from the area. It's been really important for all of us. And your emails have been really helpful to just keep letting us know that that is a problem. And I appreciate that you've been working with staff and attending the meetings, cause, I mean, just the amount of work that's happened in Coal Creek since we started getting those emails is incredible. And we're just gonna keep working on it.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a lot more pictures and we're happy to send out more pictures as well from this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, I see Mr. Green coming forward?
I just wanna thank, uh, it's great seeing Felipe and Fred and everybody. And, uh, Water Resources, uh, Watershed Protection District. It feels like a coming-of-age story to me. So although there are clearly huge data gaps that we need to address and figure out what's going on, uh, look at how far we've come in the two years since, uh, this board did pass the emergency proclamation. It has paid dividends. It has created staffing that we didn't have before. And, uh, when I was a rookie soup, I didn't quite understand, oh, Watershed Protection District, it's the county. We, we actually use the word county a lot, even when we're talking amongst ourselves. But the Watershed Protection District is a unique and distinct legal entity with its own charge. And now that we have provided some staff, it is so great to hear the state agencies saying, we're leveraging on county staff, because we were kind of a nonstarter two years ago. Uh, we had plenty of questions and all that, but we didn't have the ability. So to see, uh, the ingrained science symposium, to see two new hires that are dedicated to this hitch, uh, it's, it's just a wonderful thing. So, um, if there's any cautionary tale in there, it's the fact that grant funding as a whole on the national level, probably gonna be some big questions on there. So again, to, uh, to stay the course, uh, some level of a, uh, continued local funding, I think is hugely critical. And I, and I hope Watershed Protection District will be forthcoming in any needs that they identify, uh, if the grant funding were to dry up. Because just if you dry up a stream, you can't get hitch up there. If we start seeing, uh, grant funding dry up, this Clear Lake Hitch conservation strategy, which was a specific call-out in our emergency proclamation, sounds like we're a couple of years out from getting it done, is gonna be harder to do. So, uh, just shout out to all the people involved. I apologize for all the dumb questions I've asked over the last two years. I'm still gonna be asking about game fishing. But, uh, feel free to ask those dumb questions yourselves and, um, let, let's, let's all do this together. But thank you all for doing what you've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Any further comment? Are you able to come up to the mic, Joan?
Joan Moss. Yes, I've written things, um, specifically, I wrote for the, for the groundwater research. And, uh, a wonderful woman at, in the water department, um, published, and I've lost it. And I gave it to Lars and he didn't read it. He said he gave it back. There, I had some questions. What I wanna know is how the, the word mercury stopped being mentioned? And instead, they mentioned, um, and tested for that other, I can't think of it right now. And they're still measuring it. And about the dead cats years ago. I have some speech problems and some emotional problems, but I'm determined, just listening to the couple of words, to find these things and bring them up. So thank you. It turned in, instead of mercury, it's called something else. And I can't think of it. But I really appreciate what you're doing. I wanna read your, your study. The EPA changed the name mercury to, what are you, what, what, what other thing you test for? What was it?
Are you speaking of methylmercury?
I'll come back with more words and more preparation. Thank you. Thank you for your encouragement.
Thank you, Joan.
Hello, Board. My name is Daniela Santana and I would just like to express my gratitude to Water Resources staff specifically. But I also wanna mention, you guys need to be willing to empower the rest of the county departments, because it doesn't only fall on Water Resources staff. A, a big problem, Supervisor Sabatier, you were asking, are the hitch, have, have they always been in Blue Lakes, in Lower Blue Lakes? Well, I don't know if you guys have driven the Scotts Valley Road corridor and seen some of the infrastructure, but it allows for overland flooding. So all of these streams are usually connected. Scotts Creek will flow in to Blue Lakes at a certain lake level. I would encourage you all to take a field trip and go look at the stormwater infrastructure around all of the tributaries in every district. Because it's not only a problem in Coal Creek, it's a problem in Upper Lake. It's probably a problem down on the South Shore too. But that's another big picture ticket item that it needs to be looked at. We could only do so much in the creeks. We can only collect so much data. But until that's resolved, we're not gonna see any change.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the chamber? Not seeing any, Johanna. Do we have any hands in Zoom?
Can I have a comment for the last public comment? Thank you. Uh, the Watershed Protection District is receiving a grant from, um, the Blue Ribbon Committee administered through California Natural Resource Agency. It's about 700K to assess stormwater infrastructure around the Clear Lake Basin. And that'll be coming, um, available for contract in July. It's been approved for funding and it's through Prop 4 line item for Clear Lake. And the goal of that grant is to kind of identify some of those areas that Habimatol's EPA Director Daniela Cazares pointed out. Lot of this infrastructure is, you know, close to 75 years old when there was only resort community living here. It is undersized, it's not adequate, um, and it contributes to, um, water quality issues. And so, uh, this grant is to go out and identify where are the high priority stormwater, um, infrastructure to replace and have some planned designs built in. So just FYI, that's coming down the line, um, to identify some of these areas.
Thank you.
Did that take up some time? Okay.
Are you, Alan Fletcher, go ahead and speak. You'll have three minutes.
Alan Fletcher, Listerne or Secum. I live a block from the lake. I can give you a clue about the status of Canocti, uh, derived from the Science Symposium, wasn't it? Which was an amazing event. And, uh, they had a geologist from the earthquake laboratory based out of Moffett Field. And in terms of the short-term likelihood of Canocti re-erupting, he thinks the chances are low, cause I now have detailed mappings of the magmas. And he thinks it's a bunch of little magma pools and not one huge pool. So that's good news in the short term. In the longer term, a million years or so, he thinks all of Lake County is gonna settle down into the caldera, which may be much worse, but beyond my time. Uh, my second point, uh, I have a renaming project you'll be surprised to hear. I've spoken to Felipe twice in person. Hello, Felipe. And I think that the biological names of the Clear Lake Hitch and the Clear Lake Split Tail got switched. The word chai has been applied to the hitch. But according to Barrett and, and McLendon, Sally McLendon, the, it used to be that the hitch ran up what is currently called Kelsey Creek. And the split tail or chai ran up Coal Creek. And then about 1830, there was a war between the Pomo and the Wapo. And the Wapo diverted Kelsey Creek into Coal Creek. So they both ran down the same channel. And after that happened, the word chai got switched from the split tail to the hitch. So the correct botanic botanical names are the Clear Lake Hitch and the Clear Lake Split Tail Perin Chai. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Do we have any further hands in Zoom, Johanna? Okay. Donna, uh, go ahead and unmute and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Donna Mackwitz. I live in Clear Lake Oaks and I'm also with Red Bud Audubon Society. Supervisor Sabatier mentioned Burns Valley for hitch. And I'd like to share, Schindler Creek has fawning hitch with rescues. And historically, as recent as 1975, hitch were found in the Clear Lake Oaks High Valley basin, in holding ponds off Schindler Creek tributaries. The citizen science training scheduled for February 27th has Schindler Creek listed as number 27 on the long list of creeks you can adopt to observe after the training. And I believe Burns Valley was on there also, Supervisor Rasmussen, you might recall. Um, and I encourage anyone watching this or spread the word to join in the citizen science monitoring. And a great big shout out to Water Resources, Angela, Chris and Taylor. Great job with all the partners, especially the tribes. And I think Fred might be able to comment on how far the hitch travel. I believe I read once that they can spawn up to 10 miles upstream. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Yeah, go ahead, Fred. Go ahead. Go ahead, Fred.
I don't know that we really know how far they can go upstream other than the observations that we made. And, um, I don't know what those limits are in terms of, you know, where we've observed fish and what that distance is to the lake. But we've all seen them in places where we haven't expected to see them. So I would never count out a hitch on getting anywhere. One other thing, if I may, um, there's been a lot of, um, talk about, um, Water Resources staff. And I just wanted to speak to your investment with the positions and the power and everything you've given the Water Resources staff. And I've had, uh, the pleasure to work with a lot of people throughout my career now. And your staff here is easily one of the best, most collaborative, most cooperative group of people I've ever worked with my entire career. They're, and they're fun. They're fun to work with and to be with. And a lot of it comes from Angela's leadership. And Angela has a reputation. That reputation is just being an amazing person who's super energetic, who's the person to go to and talk to. And I just wanted to, as an independent kind of outsider, just relay those thoughts to you guys, cause I think it's very important. And they're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Johanna, were there any other hands? No other hands in Zoom, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board. I believe this is a report and, or, I'm sorry, Supervisor.
No worries.
Is that, that's a current? Okay, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say that the Clean Water Act is very important to make sure our storm drainage is dealt with appropriately. It needs to drain in the right places and it needs to drain as clean as possible. Uh, that's something that I know that, um, Mr. Paul Madaw is also in charge of with, uh, Water Resources and leads our committee for Clean Water Act. And, uh, it's slow and steady. We are making progress, but you're right. We need to do a whole lot better than that. I was not speaking about the volcano erupting. I'm just talking about the things that we already know are continuously happening below ground. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that people aren't getting nervous. Uh, but you're no, you're, you're not an outsider. You've been here a very long time. You've studied our lake, you're working with us. So, uh, thank you for what you guys do and appreciate the collaboration that I'm seeing right here.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up with, um, we are all talking about the hitch and the hitch is how this conversation started. But as Nils brought up, this really is the health of our county, the health of our watershed, the health of our lake. And the hitch are an indicator of that. And so, we put all this time and energy into studying the hitch, but the greater goal is to maintain, is to really make sure that we're maintaining the health of our entire county and for the populations that live here and every other industry that's here. So it is a really, um, it's a broad focus, but we are talking about the hitch. But it does, um, it, it does, um, bring us up to a place where we're looking at sustainability for the future and through climate change, as was brought up by my colleague. So thank you all and thank you for giving our staff such a great shout out.
Thank you, Board. Thank you to our guests, Fred and Felipe. Thank you for attending, driving all the way up here today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and conclude this item. And I know we're behind, but I think it's time to take an hour lunch.
Thank you. That was really fun.
Excuse me, what?
It was really nice to be here.
Yeah.
So, we'll come back at 12, I'm sorry, 1:40?
1:40?
1:40?